I appreciate you, Jason. Here's the second one. Thank you.
We'll now call this meeting to order if we could have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Present.
Commissioner Asper?
Present.
Commissioner Heinzlering?
Present.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Present.
Commissioner Venzel?
Present.
Commissioner Swartout, excused. Commissioner Moore?
Present.
Commissioner Leavens?
Present.
Quorum, present.
We'll now have our pledge of allegiance led by the Monroe County 4-H.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You guys can go more center.
Yes.
I pledge my head to clear thinking, my heart to greater loyalty, my hands to larger service, to my health, to better living, for my club, my community, my country, and my world.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here tonight and leading us in our pledge. Thank you. We'll now move on to opening prayer.
Eternal God, I pray that you bless us in this meeting and keep us. Lord, make your face shine on us and be gracious to us. I pray that we feel your presence during this meeting because you are with us wherever we may go. I pray that this meeting focuses upon you and your plans for us as a body of believers. Let our actions in this meeting be valuable to our aim, which is to build up and edify one another. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Now, if we have approval of agenda?
Agenda as presented with the amendment that under resolution, special tributes and presentations that remove item two on account that they're not available to attend this meeting tonight.
Second. Moved by Leavens, supported by Lamoore. Are there any questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Asper? Commissioner Heinzlering?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next up is approval of minutes from the September 16th, 2025 regular meeting. If we could have a motion, please.
Make that motion.
Second without the reading.
Moved by Huffman, supported by Lamoore. Are there any questions, corrections on the motion?
Without the reading.
Pardon?
Included without the reading.
Correct. Thank you for that. Any additional comments on this? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper? Commissioner Heinzlering?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We now move into our first segment of public comment. Are there citizens that wish to address the board?
Do a few comments if we could?
There's a microphone right here. Just so everyone can hear you.
Hi, I'm Sophie Krebs. I am the vice president of the Junior Livestock Association. And for more than 100 years, 4-H has inspired families, shaped careers, and impacted communities. From October 5th through 11th, so about this week, we will celebrate the impact of 4-H during the National 4-H Week. The theme of this year's National 4-H Week is Beyond Ready. This theme celebrates how 4-H is building a ready generation in a world of change, equipping youth with skills for the future while meeting them where they are today.
Hello, my name is Lewis Lightner. I'm from God's House 4-H Club and also teen ambassadors. Michigan 4-H Youth is a youth development program of Michigan State University Extension. It provides fun, hands-on educational opportunities that prepare youth for life and work by helping them find their spark, build real-world skills, and become resilient, adaptable, lifelong learners.
Hi there. My name is Lindsay Roof, and I'm the president of the Junior Livestock Association. Each year, more than 100,000 young people ages 5 to 19 explore what interests and what excites them with Michigan 4-H in program areas ranging from animals to archery, engineering to entrepreneurship and leadership, to learning how to cook. 4-H provides experiences that allow youth to practice and build fundamental skills that ready them for their future.
Hi, my name's Jayden. I'm a member of the Cloverclan 4-H Club and president of the Monroe High 4-H Cat Program. Data shows that compared to their peers, 4-Hers are two times more likely to have the goal of being a leader, three times more likely to participate in community service, and two times more likely to report living life with intentionality and purpose.
Hello, my name is Samantha Bertulla, and I'm the secretary of Staple Stars and the Dog Board. And we would like to thank the Board of Commissioners for allowing us to celebrate National 4-H Week by leading the pledges with them and their continued support of the Monroe County 4-H Program. Your partnership greatly impacts the youth of Monroe County.
I'm Stuart Funk. I am the Goat Caprein rep for Junior Livestock Association, and I'm present to give you guys your, um, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Suitable for framing. Hey, thank you guys all for coming tonight and treating us with the 4-H pledge, your oath in coming in and the wonderful presentation. I imagine it was a little bit nerve-wracking coming up. You're probably addressing a public body for the first time. You all did wonderfully and probably better than how I'm speaking, so there's all room for improvement.
Thank you. Are there additional citizens who wish to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move into resolution, special tributes, and presentation. Item one, special tribute recognizing Mr. Martin Kaufman for his dedication to the Commission on Aging Board. If Mr. Kaufman would, could please come to the dais. This is a special tribute recognizing Martin Kaufman for 29 years of service on the Commission on Aging Board. Whereas it is a pleasure for the Monroe County Board of Commissioners to celebrate and acknowledge the accomplishments of Mr. Martin Kaufman. And whereas Mr. Martin Kaufman was first elected to the Commission on Aging Board in 1996 and has faithfully served the citizens of Monroe County for 29 years as a District Four appointee. And whereas during this time, Mr. Martin Kaufman has demonstrated unwavering dedication, integrity, and leadership in working toward the betterment of our community. And whereas the Monroe County, the county of Monroe wishes to acknowledge and express its sincere gratitude for Mr. Martin Kaufman's longevity, expertise, and commitment to public service. Now, therefore, be it resolved that on the seventh day of October 2025, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes and applauds Mr. Martin Kaufman for his outstanding dedication and for continuing to bring pride to Monroe County. Be it further resolved that the Board offers its deep appreciation for Mr. Kaufman's tireless efforts and dedication to the county citizen. Resolution offered by Commissioner Jay Heinzlering, resolution supported by Commissioner David Venzel. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Before I start, I have to apologize. I spent time writing my comments, left my glasses home. These are my $3-for-$10 Walgreens glasses. I know they look funny, but they work better than nothing, so please bear with me. Chairman Venzel, Commissioners, Commissioner Jay Heinzlering. I'm Marty Kaufman from Frenchtown Township. I've served on the Commission on Aging for 29 years, the last 19 years as chair or vice chair. I've served with six county commissioners and four Commission on Aging directors. The senior millage generated $4.3 million last year, approximately 9% of the county budget. There are 19 providers with 36 programs. Monroe County takes good care of its seniors. Because each of you appoints one COA board member, we're likely to be strangers when we first meet. This is good. We come from many different walks of life with varied experiences and expertise. As individuals, we're no smarter than anyone else, but we work well together. Nine heads are better than one, but only if everyone freely speaks and everyone is thoughtfully heard. This leads to wiser decisions than any of us could make alone. We work hard to be fair and consistent and to serve the needs of Monroe County seniors. You would be pleased to see how seriously our board members take their commitment to be accountable to the taxpayers, to the seniors, to you, the county, our county commissioners, and to the service providers. Our hard work and thoughtful deliberations enable us to justify our decisions. I realized early how important it was for the Commission on Aging to earn, I'm sorry, to earn and keep your trust and confidence. Over the years, you have been very supportive of our efforts, especially at critical times. And for this, I am most thankful. Occasionally, we've had to deal with chicanery by service providers or even by service recipients. On a number of occasions, we've had to consult with the county legal advisor and once even involved the county prosecutor. At one contentious meeting held in these very chambers, because of the large crowd, three renowned county judges sat in attendance to ensure that their favorite service provider was treated fairly. All three judges were satisfied, and none uttered a word. I've been accosted in the food aisles of Myers and phoned at home by very concerned and distraught seniors, as well as service providers who needed reassurance about an impending COA action. They have all been respectful and polite. They have all been satisfied with my explanations. They know we do our homework, and they know we care. We work hard to be fair and consistent. We do all of the heavy lifting for you so that you can confidently accept the Commission on Aging's recommendations for the allocation of county senior millage funds. The COA couldn't do its work without the support of the COA director. Jason Berry, our current director, provides board members with all the information needed to make sound decisions. With Jason's help and through our own efforts, we strive to stay abreast of senior needs and whether we're meeting them. Back in 1973, the county commissioners wisely created the Commission on Aging. The COA not only saves you commissioners a lot of work, but also was intended to remove politics from the process of deciding who gets what. This has worked well during my tenure on the Commission on Aging. The Commission on Aging has been very successful in keeping politics out of its deliberations so that you, our county commissioners, can confidently accept our recommendations. It has been my privilege to serve on this most effective board. Thank you. If you don't mind me repeating myself a little, I got this idea about nine heads better than one back in 2017 when Jeff McBee was the director, and we were invited up to Southfield in Oakland County by the Area Agency on Aging for a leadership aboard ceremony. So Jeff and I were sitting on, standing on the stage, and there were a big crowd in front of us. And this is what I said, pardon me for repeating myself a little bit. It's an honor to be recognized by the Area Agency on Aging 1B, an agency we hold in high regard. Your commitment and professionalism are an inspiration. As individuals on the Monroe County Commission on Aging, we're no smarter than anyone else, but we work well together. Nine heads are better than one, but only if everyone freely speaks and everyone is thoughtfully heard. Then everyone votes their own conscience. This leads to wiser decisions than any of us could ever make alone. We're kept well informed by a competent and conscientious director with good people schools. You know I'm talking here about Jeff McBee, okay? We've had a lot of good directors. We've earned the trust and support of our county Board of Commissioners. Monroe County voters recently approved both a millage renewal and an increase, a sacred trust. What more could we ask for? Thank you. Could I please have this, my comments read into the record? Thank you. Sure.
Thank you, Marty.
Go right in the middle.
Oh, right over there?
Yes, just so you can get all the commissioners.
Yeah, they're in there? We're gonna get a picture of them. We'll now move into finance matters. Item one, payment of the October 8, 2025 accounts payable. Current claims reported in the amount of $1,343,766.87. Could I get a motion before Ms. Meyer's presentation?
Make that motion.
Moved by Huffman, supported by Asper.
Good evening. On page number one, vendor number 20554, Bell Tire Distributors, Inc., it's maintenance on sheriff vehicles. Vendor number 50531, Environmental Enterprises, Inc., household hazardous waste collection paid through the Solid Waste Fund. Page number two, vendor number 133890, Motorola Solutions, Inc., central dispatch radio upgrade. And on page number three, vendor number 180016, Rappiscan Systems, Inc., scheduled maintenance on the courthouse security scanner, and that's the end of my list.
Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Heinzlering?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number two, letter dated October 1, 2025 from Mr. David Thompson, Monroe County Drain Commissioner, submitting and requesting approval of the 2025 annual report for special drainage assessments in the amount of $2,812,380.74 and placement on the grand levy for spreading of assessments.
Good evening, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to perform my sworn duties under Act 40, the Public Acts of 1956, which is to appear at the first regular board meeting in October and present the role. I would also like to take this time to introduce Aiden Wamer, who is our new deputy drain commissioner for drains in the office. So he will be probably attending quite a few of your meetings going forward. I wanted to put a name with a face as we continue his training and what it is to deal with the community and drains. So I am pleased to present you with this role. 208, 200, $2,812,380.74, which you have a resolution to place on the role. And then, of course, you have the right to, um, for your $305,732.64, which is the obligation of the county to give 50% to the road commission as you have traditionally done in a separate resolution. Does anyone have any questions?
I'll make the motion.
Moved by Heinzlering, supported by Huffman on the, on the first, action number one. Any questions on action number one?
I got a question, but it's not pertaining, everything's cool. Mr. Surgo retired?
No, Mr. Surgo is the deputy drain commissioner for county agency. But he is still helping with the training of our new gentleman here.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzlering?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Could I get a motion for the action number two?
Make the motion.
Second.
Moved by Heinzlering, supported by Lamoore. Are there questions on this motion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Is the motion to approve it? Is that what our motion is?
Yes.
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 Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzlering?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next, moving on to the consent agenda. Item one, approval of non-clames. Item A, check register dated September 26, 2025, in the amount of $597,042.81. Letter B, check register dated October 3, 2025, in the amount of $328,965.63. Could I get a motion on this?
So moved.
Moved by Lamoore, supported by Asper. Any questions on this motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzlering?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, under communications, item one, operations committee reporter committee chairman from October 2, 2025 meeting. Link to the operations committee meeting is attached. Item A, letter dated September 24, 2025, from Mr. Jeffrey Yorky, prosecuting attorney, requesting to eliminate a victims' rights secretary position and add a victims' rights advocate position. This upgrade does not require additional funds and would be effective October 20, 2025. Could I get a motion, please?
I'll second that.
Moved by Henry Leavens, supported by Huffman. Are there questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzlering?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item two, letter dated September 30, 2025, from Detective Lieutenant James Jarrett, Michigan State Police, Mantis, requesting approval to accept the Burn Justice Assistance Grant Award in the amount of $82,036 from the Michigan State Police. No matching funds are required for this grant. Could I get a motion for that?
Make the motion.
Second.
Moved by Heinzlering, supported by Lamoore. Are there any questions? I know Sheriff Goodenough said he would answer any questions that we had.
We all appreciate the good work, Mantis does.
Go ahead.
No, I just said I think we all appreciate the good work, Mantis does.
Okay.
I have one question.
Okay.
This will administrate through our administrative, as they take and use that grant, the monies will be...
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
You are wrapped with Sue.
I'm sorry?
As you get the monies from this grant, well, it's all ran from us, right, Sue? I mean, they just don't get a chunk check.
The county is a fiduciary. The Mantis Board decides how the money is spent.
That's my question, thank you.
Any other questions, Sheriff Goodenough? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzlering?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamoore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item three, letter dated September 25, 2024, from Mr. Michael Wolford, Monroe County Equalization Director, submitting the Monroe County Apportionment Report with the grand levy for 2025 in the amount of $279,141,264.56 and recommending the board accept and adopt the report. If we could get a motion before hearing from Mr. Wolford.
So moved.
Moved by Lamoore, supported by Huffman. Now we'll turn it over to you, Michael.
All right, good evening, Commissioners. So the apportionment report, this is the last piece of the property tax puzzle that I come before you every year. It generally, this generally sets all the millage rates for all the taxing authorities countywide, throughout Monroe County, for the dollars to be raised for tax purposes. You know, the taxing authorities include the township, cities, villages, county government agencies, the community college, and local, and local school districts, and the intermediate school district. This is an increase of $15,149,295, which is about a 5.7% increase over last year. In retrospect, 2024, the increase was 5.8%. Basically, so the main user of this report is the county treasurer. They use this, he uses this to set the winter tax bond for the collections and also to settle with the county, the township treasurers when they come in after they collect all the taxes. And just on a side note, also, the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, it's not set yet, but we're estimating that it's going to be about 2.7% this year going into 2026. 2025 was 3.1, 2024 was 5.1, 2023 was 7.9. So I can answer any questions that you have on the apportionment report? Yes?
So when you say 5.7, and it was 5.8 before, I think I asked this question before, but I can't recall your answer. So the millages we have are what allow it to be more than 5%, correct?
Correct. So the CPI last year would have been 3.1%. So generally, like, my house, it would have only went up 3.1%. Now, if more millages are voted on, you know, then that would obviously add to it. We did have some new millages, Dundee Village Roads, Ida Township Fire Airport School Bond. Myland Schools had a sinking fund. And then there's going to be some, you know, on the November ballot that will be. But so if there's increases in the millage rates that are voted on by the people, obviously, that would make the, everybody, you know, overall, the whole collection go up. Also, you have uncappings in there. So, you know, when a property sells, it gets uncapped, and it goes up above the rate of inflation. So there's varying things that, that affect it. But generally speaking, it's the, the new construction as well. You have new construction that goes up that makes it, but the new millages, along with the new construction and the uncappings, really push it above the CPI generally every year.
On page seven, you have industrial facilities millage rates, and then in parentheses it says millages do not include six set mills. What does that mean?
State, the state equal education fund, state education tax.
Oh, so that's excluded out of these numbers, okay.
The IFT is, the state in their wisdom decided that they didn't, you know, that those weren't going to be included.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question, please.
Yep.
Does industrial have, does it play a role on what our property taxes are as a resident? And different tax base, like, you know, if you have a factory and you got this and that, does that help your tax base stay lower? Or do we gotta still run?
No, so I mean, it's really just, it's, whether it's industrial, commercial, residential, ag, it really just has to do with your millage rates. So you have the value of your property that you have, depending on what the property is. And then depending on what, where you live, you know, the city of Monroe has a lot more... and then depending on what, where you live, you know, the city of Monroe has a lot more taxes. But is a, is an industrial plant or something going to make something go down? No. It's not going to keep everybody else lower. It's, it's part of the reason equalization exists. It's actually a very good question that you're asking because we equalize by class. So we make sure that everybody, whether it's ag, residential, commercial, industrial, that those values go up, the percent increase as determined by your equalization director. You know, how much did ag go up this year? So we make sure that all the ag properties, when we value them, and when the local assessor plays an assessment on them, that they go up, let's say, four percent. And if industrial goes up three percent, then that whole industrial class goes up three percent. Obviously, residential is the one that usually has the bigger spikes going up and down. So, you know, let's say they went up eight percent. So generally, the whole residential class, and that would come into play a little bit more with the uncapping part of it. But for the most part, everybody's only going to go up the CPI unless they build something new on their property. You're staying in your house, you're staying in your business, or if nothing's changing, you're only going to go up the CPI, have added, extra millages added on to it to raise it if you've voted on by the people. But if new businesses or new industry comes in, you know, when Fermi was built, you know, the people, you know, in Berlin Township didn't see a tax reduction if they just owned their home, you know, because there would just be more revenue coming in.
Because I know right now with the farmers this year for sure, I can see it really bad as fertilizers keep climbing and the price is way down here yet. I mean, there's such a gap there that average farmer's on their corn right now is a hundred and ten to a hundred and thirty dollars an acre they're losing. I know with the beans, my son gave me the bills the other day, and I says, holy catfish. We shouldn't even planted soybeans this last year, really.
So I mean...
And it's frustrating because then the farmers come to me and say, hey, what are we doing about taxes? Because it makes it tough when you can't make the money because of the world, the world market going up and down.
So I mean, but, I mean, so the taxes on the farm ground is, that's especially kept low, honestly, through the property, General Property Tax Act, because that never gets uncapped as long as you fill out a form. So it never actually reaches, you know, the, what, what the general farmer is paying taxes on is a value probably from, you know, that's only gone up the rate of inflation back from nineteen ninety-five or so. So it's never really reached its full value. You know, in my study and stuff, I can say that farm ground is six, seven thousand dollars an acre, but that's not whatever, that's not what the farmer pays on. He pays on a much lower per acre rate unless they buy it at a higher value and then turn it into something else. But as long as they're going to farm it, it never gets uncapped and it never comes up to the actual value that the farm ground has. So it's, nothing in what we do or how we do it is gonna, is gonna lower, you know, a farmer's taxes. It's already, it's already kept down at a very, I say a low level, but you, you know, you, they still pay a lot of taxes on it.
Because it hurts us now because there's a lot of this new power coming in, and they're going to farmland because farmers got good land, but they're not making enough on their crops, so they're turning it over to big solar companies or wherever so they can at least survive, you know? It's unfortunate, it's unfortunate it's happening, but it is.
I go to March Board Review and speak to the farmers because a lot of the farmers sit on the March Boards of Review and discuss the values that I have in my study and, you know, show them the sales or talk to them about what values are and, you know, like, if you were to buy some land today, what, what would it have to be at to, for you to actually make money? And they're probably like, six thousand dollars if I was going to add it today, you know, but I'm like, well, why is it sell for eight? And he's like, well, because, you know, God's not making any more of it. And then depending on how big the farmer is, it just goes into a portfolio. You know, they bought some at a thousand and now they're buying some. I'm no farmer. Henry's looking at me like, you don't know what you're doing. But that's why I talk to the farmers, to try to get an understanding of, of how their actual, the portfolio and how it works, because when, when I, what we do for you is provide you a value. If this is what the whole ag class is worth in Monroe County, you rely on us to give you that number, we want to make sure that we get it right because we want to make sure that whether it's ag, commercial, or industrial, or residential, we don't, you know, I don't want to pay more taxes. And we're, we're the same as everybody.
Thank you, appreciate, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Wolford?
Why, just really quick, because you opened the door to it and it doesn't really address what we're, you know, having to deliberate here, but it does, you know, raise the broader question about taxes. And as it was stated more wisely by one of our Supreme Court justices, the power to tax is the power to destroy. And a lot of people get fussy with some of my positions on millages and all these other things. They don't appreciate that farmers are some of the biggest property taxpayers in this county. And yeah, when you give the example that this millage or that millage is a hundred-odd dollars to a common homeowner, and I question those numbers because we don't have hundred-thousand-dollar homes in Monroe County anymore, but when your family is relying and you're in the, in the nearest margins with the price of fuel, the price of chemical, seed, and, and everything else, and they say, well, it's just a small thing, or it's not a, it's not a new tax, it's a renewal. Well, say that to the farmer that's trying to pass something down to his kids, just making, you know, ends, ends meet with where it is and, and having those additional costs and the pressure for solar and the other things that Hoffman said. So I just, you know, want to take that opportunity because you brought it up now and the, the prices are going up and, and, and you actually say to the farmer, say, well, why are you, you paying this money? Because, well, it, it's my living and that's the price of it and I plug it into that portfolio, but it doesn't ease the sting, so.
And, and pointing that out, when we set our values, I try to take that into account just because we look at residential, you know, if somebody pays too much for a home, I'm, you know, I should try to recognize that, you know, what is actual market? It's my job to determine the true cash value for all the land in one sale or a couple of sales is not a market. It's the, it's the general aspect of how things, you know, what's the market value if I was to sell it or if you were to sell it and who's willing to pay? I shouldn't count on the highest bidder, right? I mean, because there's other people that pay lower amounts. And to your, I, I totally agree with you on the new millage thing because it was, we always like to give that it'll only cost someone, you know, somebody with a hundred-thousand-dollar house this much money. You know, a few years back, there was one, you know, and nobody wants to talk about the big corporations or the industrial, you know, but, God, I think one, one, like, it was years ago, and it was like, it was going to raise like DTEs taxes like forty, fifty thousand dollars in one year, just a very small increase, very, very small increases have an effect on everybody, large and small, and, you know, that's why it's important for the people to know what they're voting on when they do it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzeling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Item number four, letter dated October seventh, two thousand twenty-five, from Mr. Jason Berry, Community Planning and Engagement Director, requesting to be formally appointed as the Grant Administrator for the Monroe County Survey and Remonumentation Program. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Asper, supported by Lamore. Other questions on the motion?
I appreciate Jason taking this on. I just like how that's worded, how he appointed himself. That's funny.
He's going to appreciate...
To go around appointing yourself for stuff, but no, seriously, thank you for doing that, Jason.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzeling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yep.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item, number five, letter dated October two, two thousand twenty-five, from Mr. Michael Olakovich, I hope I said that right, Emergency Management Director, requesting approval of the FY two thousand twenty-six Local Emergency Management Program's initial work agreement. Could I get a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by, moved by Huffman, supported by Lamore. Now, are there questions? And is Michael here? That's what I thought, okay. How'd I do on the pronunciation, Michael?
[inaudible].
[inaudible].
Other questions for Michael?
I guess one thing that came up in the agenda meeting by Commissioner Moore this past Thursday is your predecessor would periodically check in with us for updates, emergency management, other things like that, and candidly spoiled us a little bit because, you know, the operations lie in the background. We hope we don't ever have emergencies, but still like to know our readiness and preparedness for when we do. And I know it doesn't apply to this, but if it's possible, maybe every quarter or so to check in with us and give us a update where things are.
That was on my schedule to come once a month, moving forward.
Not that much.
That's even, no, that's fine.
We don't want to see that much.
That's fine.
All right, you guys said it, not me.
Just so you know, you're welcome.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Can you explain a little bit, just so we understand a little better?
Yeah, so...
Please, thank you.
I don't know who got the fourteen-page reporting, but every quarter I need to report on different activities that are done. And a lot of it's just saying that we're doing planning meetings, we're reviewing our EOP, meeting with different groups in the county, finance reports every quarter, things along those lines.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzeling?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yep.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number six, appointment of Monroe County, Monroe Community Mental Health Authority Board Member. Item A, letter dated September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, from Ms. Rebecca Pascoe, Chairperson, Monroe County Community Mental Health Authority, requesting the appointment of Mr. John Cullen to the Monroe County Community Mental Health Authority for an unexpired term commencing on October eighth, two thousand twenty-five, and ending on March thirty-one, two thousand twenty-seven. Could I get a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Asper, supported by Lamore. Other questions on this motion? Or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lamore?
Yes.
Commissioner Venzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Leavens?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinzeling?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have no public hearings. Is there any old business? Hearing none, any new business? Hearing none, we'll move into our last segment of public comment. Are there citizens who wish to address the Board?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Lisa Graham. I'm the CEO for Monroe Community Mental Health Authority, and I just wanted to come tonight to let you know that we are very excited. Last week, we opened our Behavioral Health Urgent Care, so it's the first and only Behavioral Health Urgent Care in the county. Next, probably later this week, you will all get an invitation to a community open house that'll happen in November, and a ribbon-cutting ceremony, and I, I hope that all of you can make it. This is a tremendous resource for our whole county, and we've been working on this for quite a while. I hope to see all of you there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Missy.
Anyone else that wishes to address the Board?
Marty Kaufman, French Town Township. I'd like to ask the Emergency Services Director where the brochures are for Detroit Edison evacuation. They've been there every year. This year, there are none. And I got something in the mail saying all I have to do is go down to the building and they're, they're there, but they are not there and they have not been there. So I'd like to know, are we going to have any available for the public?
I'll have to look into that. I don't know if they went online or what they're doing.
Because usually there are hard copies, because if you, if you need to go to the pharmacy to get KI pills, you need a paper. And that, that, that brochure has been available every single year I can think of going way back, and all of a sudden, there are none. So that doesn't strike me as being real good.
Do they normally mail them to you?
Pardon?
Do they normally mail them to you? Are you in the ten-mile EPZ?
Yeah, I'm five-mile circle. I'm on the five-mile circle, but you know what, it isn't just for me, it's for everybody who lives here. So I'm really not asking for myself, I'm asking for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Thank you.
Well, now, no announcements. We'll now move into member's time. Commissioner Moore?
Well, I just think that last interaction, there's a perfect example of what Marty does. Nothing gets by him. I've been saying since two thousand sixteen, I wish all of our boards functioned like the Commission on Aging Board. It's probably one of the most efficient, well-functioning boards that I've, meetings I've ever attended. I remember attending them regularly for the first couple of years when I sat on this Board, and I was just astounded by how well they worked together, how they fight for seniors, how they're both thrifty but effective. They get the most out of their vendors, which I highly appreciate, so I think it's the best of both worlds. And they have had good directors, both in Jeff and Jason in my tenure, and I know going before that. So Marty, you'll be missed, but we appreciate all that you've done, and I can't say enough good things about that Board. With that, I'll pass.
Mr. Lamore?
Thank you, Chairman. Once again, I'd like to show our appreciation towards Mr. Kaufman. Great service. Thank you very much for your service. Also, I'd like to remind everybody that Telegraph Road and its misfortunate problem right now, if anybody's drove north on Telegraph in between Stewart and Front Street, you'll notice that there's a lot of construction right there. And please keep in mind that it's negatively impacting a lot of those businesses there too.
And please keep in mind that it's negatively impacting a lot of those businesses there, too. So if you have time, patience, whatever you want to call it, please do your best to give them some business, if you could, good business, that is, not your business. So.
Or the business. Don't give them the business.
Yes, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Heinzlerling?
I want to echo Commissioner Moore, Commissioner Lamoore's comments. Mr. Kaufman, thank you, sir. 29 years is not unnoticed. That's a long time to be serving the community, and big shout out to Jefferson Football, 6-0 for the first time since, I think, 2006? 2005? Heck of an accomplishment. Program's turning around. Go Bears.
Commissioner Asper?
Yes, I would like to thank Mr. Kaufman also. I just hear wonderful things from my particular representative on that board, and she's just thrilled to be serving there. So I really appreciate all you guys do. And like Commissioner Moore mentioned, thrift, but fighting for the seniors and making sure that the dollars are sprint properly, and that's, that's just amazing. You've done a great job. I also wanted to follow up on Lisa Graham. At Monroe Community Mental Health, there's going to be a town hall, or 2025 Town Hall is going to be on October 22nd, which is a Wednesday, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. And it's going to be at Ellis Library and Reference Center, so it's really easy, easy to find. And I just think it'd be wonderful if people could go to that and just see the things that are going on for mental health in Monroe County. We are really, really moving forward and, and doing a really wonderful work, as she mentioned, but also, if you want to come to the town hall, you could hear even more. It's just, it's astounding. I'm just very proud of that board. And Lisa.
Commissioner Hoffman?
I want to thank Marty for what he does, because I'm getting closer every day. Thank you. And then also, I wanted to thank all of our apartment heads for coming out tonight. It's, we are all faithful, and you all come to our meetings, which is great. And then also, the bike path, I was out to the fairgrounds the other day checking with our manager out there, which Daryl's doing a real good job out there for us. And they had a little problem there with easements going down the edge of the west side of the fairgrounds, but they did finally get that solved. So they're finishing up that stretch of the runway there for the people now. But, boy, I would really like to alert the people that do go up and down there. If you go in and out of Bates Lane now, because of the Mason Run being replaced on North Telegraph, so much traffic going up and down through there, and there's no signs up yet for these people on their bicycles. I know they have the right of way, but, boy, they shoot right across there, like at Bates Lane, and down by Raisenville there, there are just a lot of walkers. So we really got to be careful there with that. And then with the 4H kids, I'm glad they came in tonight.
Darn it. I was hoping I would, you took that, was it?
I'm sorry. I was just going to say, they're the future of our farming lives in Monroe County. We don't support these kids. They do a great job, and they're the next ones to take over the tractors when Dad leaves, and right on up the line, so. And I know that's in my district, that's, that's huge, because most of my district is all farming. And then one last thing. We have a big meeting tomorrow night, it's a town hall meeting, at the, at the, at the park there. It's going to be pretty big. The people are really up in arms, because they're going to take 500 acres there on Ann Arbor Road, and they want to build this communications center. And they're trying to get people to jump on, but we can give our advice, but we really can't tell the supervisors in the village what to do out there. But it's got a lot of folks upset. So I don't know if they're hearing anything up this way from that, but it's big talk in my neck of the woods. So when that comes in, that's going to be, they're, they're buying up 500 acres. The Sears Farmer, who was a big corp, bought the property, now it's moved on to, this other company bought it, now it looks like it's going to be, it's kind of why I was moking around there with you tonight, Mike. Thank you. But that's, I was wondering if, what's going to happen there. Anyhow, that's it. Thank you.
Vice Chair Leavens?
As is usually the case, by the time it gets to me, all of the thanks have been thanked up. So still, I don't think it'd be redundant to thank Marty for almost three decades of committed service to the Commission on Aging. I'd like to echo Commissioner Hoffman, I thought I was going to be able to do it, to recognize and thank the 4H participants coming in today, you know, leading with the pledge, their pledge, and their presentations. And that's a big thing, to have the future leaders come in, youth, when so many distractions are out there, the video games, this and that, to come in and look us in the eye and tell us what they're doing, and their future plans. That's, that's huge and very commendable, and speaks to a robust and amazing 4H program. Sometimes, I kind of comment that Monroe is a little bit of the, the land that time forgot, the, the community things that we do that's lost in so many other, other places with our, our 4H program and the rest. And I wanted to especially recognize Andy from the museum. I attended the October Nights this weekend, and they were fantastic. If anyone is on social media, had the, the benefit of a friend or family that stopped in, that was an incredible program. It was a little dicey with the, the trail going through there. They basically scraped out a little portion there at Raisenville, and it was at North Custer, to, you know, have folks park. I think they had four-wheel drive. It wasn't a problem, it was a great program. Last thing, I looked in the administrators' report at page eight, it indicated that the future boards and commissions are going to be going out to advertisement. And so, Grace, if you could see that in addition to the website, and I presume it'd be the, the Monroe Evening News, where it's going to be advertised, that we looked to Michelle with her social media, as well as the, the local publishers out in Commissioner Hoffman's area, the Dundee Independent, the Bedford Press, and candidly, I know that the advance is published out of Blissfield, but that has a readership in Wyford Township that we reach out. I'd like to see our boards and commissions occupied by folks more than just 48161. No offense, Mr. Lamoore, but it'd be nice to have a broader four-corner announcement that gets all the ways, because Commissioner Moore can tell you, when the, when the Bedford Press goes out, everyone receives it, everyone reads it, and that would be a great way to get that out there. And, and then finally, one last thing, we had a number of things come before us tonight, even if they were self-appointed grant administrator positions. It hallmarks the, the importance of grants and that other level of revenue that we enjoy beyond the tax base and the services it provides. I know the Sheriff's Department has historically had somebody looking for law enforcement grant. We see the burn, the, the water safety ones, and the rest. I think at this point, as we march into the modernity, that we think of the county, a clearinghouse person that's, that's focused on grants that benefits the entire county, whether it's the Sheriff's Department, the judiciary, other law enforcement, you know, what we're doing here, planning and the rest, because there's a, a lot of opportunities there that I, I think are being missed, and we don't have a dedicated, and I don't want to use the word lobbyist, because that's a pejorative. No one likes the lobby word, but a lot of other sophisticated counties, they have a lobbyist. They're an advocate that, that goes to Lansing, that researches federal, state, you know, other 501(c)(3) opportunities. And I've, I've been, I've been harping on this, you know, for a while. Now that we have a sobriety court, this is going to be my new one, until that's satisfied. So prepare yourselves. I'm done.
Are you sure?
I'm not sure. I think so.
You know, for, for saying that everybody else stole us thunder, you did okay. I, I, I'm going to just echo the, the comments of my colleagues regarding Mr. Kaufman. I, I can't imagine serving on a board for 29 years, let alone leading the board in the role of chairman or vice chairman for 19 of those 29 years. It's absolutely amazing service to our county, and I, I really thank you for that. With that, I will adjourn the meeting.